Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, May 7th in the Green Room at 8:00 AM. Let's please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge to be just as true as the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? Nope, okay. Item number three is the approval of minutes, both for the April 16th Town Council Regular Meeting and the April 24th Combined Special Town Meeting and the Budget Hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Yeah, okay. We'll give her the notes, okay. Item number four, appointments. We have Kathleen Davidson here this morning, hoping to be appointed to the Sustainability Committee for a term until June 30th, 2026. Good morning, Kathleen. How are you doing? Would you like to tell us why it is that you would be interested in joining?
Sure. I've lived in Clinton for 20 some odd years, not a native, but feel like one, and I do love this town. I think volunteering is important. I help out at the Food for All Garden. I volunteered at Literacy Volunteers. I help out at our church. This seemed like a good fit for me in terms of committees, so that's why I'd like to be on it.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Anyone have any questions for Kathleen? Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. At your leisure, would you go to the Town Clerk to be sworn in before the next meeting?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Item number five, we have Carl Rosa from the Connecticut Main Street Program here to talk about your, I guess, not audit, but...
The assessment.
It's assessment of Clinton, okay.
Yes, good morning. My name is Carl Rosa. I'm the Field Services Director for Connecticut Main Street Center, and the town of Clinton joined our network earlier this year, and in February we conducted an assessment of what we would consider to be, or what you consider to be, your Main Street area, your downtown area for the town of Clinton. One of the benefits of membership to our network is an annual assessment that we could review and measure year after year to just take a look at, according to the Main Street process, how you're addressing your issues on Main Street. But before I get into the assessment report, I just want to give a brief explanation about the Main Street program, I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, but it's based on a four-point process. It was created back in the late 1970s by the National Trust for Historic Preservation when they saw a need to pay attention to the main streets in our downtowns across America. Currently, today, there are about 2,000 plus official Main Street programs and business improvement districts, and have some type of a management process for their Main Street. In Connecticut, I've probably done thus far since we rolled out this assessment process, about 70 of these across the state of Connecticut with our members, and we're just starting to get into second and third assessments to measure how towns are doing with their Main Streets year after year. So I want to get into the report. You all have, you have a copy of it in front of you. Basically, I sat down with Michelle, your planner, earlier in the year, in February, and we, series of 85 questions, and they're split up in four categories. Categories are economic vitality, which addresses all of the economics of your Main Street, your downtown, building owners, merchants and businesses, historic preservation, business growth, business improvement, recruiting businesses to your Main Street. Second category is design, which would be all the physical characteristics of your Main Street, sidewalk conditions, building facades, landscaping, parking, things that are the physical characteristics of your downtown design. The third category is promotion. That would be marketing, branding, promoting your Main Street, your district. The businesses that are there, the restaurants that are there, events, and event coordination, town events and so forth, that would fall under the promotion. And the fourth category is organization, and that's basically the messaging and the type of organizational management process that you would employ to address your Main Street area. So that would deal with your website, your emails, your newsletters, your social media, your Board of Directors, fundraising, fund development, particularly if you were to employ a management process that was a nonprofit, for example, that was a true public-private partnership entity that was addressing your Main Street, you might want to get involved in fund development and fundraising and all of that. So that's the organization point. So there's four points that work collectively together to address all of your issues, tie up all the loose ends for your Main Street. Prior to my experience as Field Services Director with Connecticut Main Street Center, I was the Executive Director of Main Street Waterbury for about 18 years, so I actually employed this process for downtown, and you'll see many models across the state of Connecticut. So I want to scroll down and look at how you initially scored and get into some of the categories, just to give you an overview of the report. There's a lot, I'm condensing it into a couple of minutes here, but I just want to give you the feel for it. If you scroll down to these, or if you turn to the page that talks about the actual Main Street management results, you'll see a wheel with a center overall score of 48, and then you'll see scores and how you scored initially with all of your, the four categories that I just mentioned to you, okay? Now, this is according to our measurement matrix. It really should not be equated to any type of numerical grade scores if you were taking a test in grammar school or whatever. These are ranges that we apply to the categories, and these are how we determine whether it's a situation that needs attention, needs improvement, is satisfactory, or is high performing. So if you look at the ranges, for example, most of your scoring fell in the room for improvement area, and that is not to be, that is not unexpected, let's put it that way, because you yet, have yet to employ a managed Main Street process to your, to your, to your Main Street, the way we measure it. So it's just something that we wanted to establish a baseline, so that when we do this again next year, we can see if there's been any specific movement in any of the categories. So I want to make that clear. Don't be concerned at all with these initial scores, because it's something that we set right off the bat, and then we can, we can grow with it from there. But basically, for all of those categories, with the exception of economic vitality, you're in that mid-range of room for improvement, but, you know, I fully expect that everything will be trending up towards satisfactory when we revisit this again next year, because as you'll see as we go down to ensuing pages, I've offered some recommendations and a pathway and a direction of things that you can get to right off the bat. So any questions regarding that right now? So if I scroll down, if I go over to the pages that get into general findings, strengths, and opportunities, just to give you an overview of it, we, we looked at a specific geographic area that extended from Clinton Antiques down to Pearl Street at the UPS Store. But it could be any area, that geographic area that you determine. For us, that felt like a logical layout of Main Street. And the criteria is it has to be relatively flat, walkable, there has to be contiguous buildings, you know, that kind of line up, that comprise your Main Street. And while there were some setback properties and parking lots, overall, it was a pretty good Main Street layout, which we thought very walkable and very conducive to a Main Street. But to be clear, we're just talking about this geographic area, nothing town at large, just your, what we would consider to be your Main Street, your downtown. I think strength-wise, overall, the town does a really good job with informing investors, developers, and prospective businesses about what is the situation here in Clinton, what are the opportunities, information that is kind of like a customer service base of letting them know about the zoning, the ordinances, contact information, town officials that they can contact if they're interested in bringing their business to Main Street and Clinton. I think you do a good stewardship of the condition of your Main Street, your sidewalks, the clean, safe, and friendly approach, which definitely is conducive to encouraging more pedestrian and foot traffic on Main Street. You've incorporated environmental resiliency initiatives, and you do very well communicating with your stakeholders, your building owners, and your businesses on Main Street. And there's a good commitment from town officials and public safety officials about your efforts for a healthy and vibrant downtown district. I think some of the opportunities moving forward would be to start establishing a process that is, that takes into consideration a more consistent marketing strategy, something that's going to also assemble the tools that is required to help you move forward, just again, for this geographic area. Things like, that would help you with recruiting businesses, things like tracking and sharing the impact that happens on your Main Street. Data such as job creation, new businesses, businesses that may have moved out, public-private investment, property transactions, even though a building may have changed hands from one owner to another, it shows investment and it shows interest in things that are going on, on Main Street and Clinton. So I think that, that could get started right away about compiling and sharing impact data about your Main Street is very important. I think continued public art and art installations along Main Street is the connective tissue that ties everything else together. It's conducive to, it promotes walkability, they're points of interest, and you're, there are some installations along the way, there's some, that I, that I had observed when I was touring Main Street here in Clinton, so more of that would be, would contribute to a vibrant Main Street. I think a concentrated marketing effort. When I go to your town website, even if I go to the Chambers site, I don't see a lot about the, I see some business, business listings categorized, but not as it relates to the geographic area that we're talking about. I'm talking about packaging and marketing your Main Street, your downtown, as an entity. That could happen, and that might be an additional page on the town website, or something that you establish, but I think this is something that could get done sooner than later. If you really want to focus on interest-driving activity and business to your Main Street and Clinton, you might want to consider a more concentrated marketing strategy moving forward. And that could include also everything that goes along with that, not only the website, but social media, consistent newsletters that just talk a lot about things that are happening on Main Street, yet in the habit of informing folks and with outreach about things that are happening. I think strategic planning with specific tasks and measurable goals needs to occur for your Main Street, and that might, that could tie in with your P O C D, what had been written in there, and then see if you can then take it a step further and just focus on the specifics for your Main Street as well. Eventually, there might be an opportunity to establish a managed process, someone or some organization that's the champion for your downtown or your Main Street, someone that's going to tie up all those loose ends, be the go-to, be the liaison between municipal officials, the building owners, the businesses, the volunteers, and the community at large for Main Street issues. And that could be a maintenance, a management program that falls under the Economic Development Office, or Commission, or the First Selectman's Office, or it could be, starts with a steering committee that's going to put together projects and programs specific for what I'm speaking about today, and then eventually transitions to a point person, or it could be the point person that's an Economic Development Director or official that, that is overseeing a lot of this. There are many models that you can employ for your town that would get the process started for managing your Main Street. So my recommendations moving forward over the next 12 months, if you should, should choose, are to get started with some basic, assembling of basic tools to help you. For instance, you may have a listing on your site for all of the buildings and, all of the commercial buildings in town, but do you have a set aside separate list for all the buildings on Main Street? Who owns them? How much square feet? Are they vacant? Are they occupied? Also, available commercial space, building listings, you might want to do a little bit of extra work on trying to get a handle if there are any residents that live on Main Street, if you have pending residential development that's going to impact your Main Street in the future, which there could be. Who are they? What's the demographics of your residents? And workforce, people that work on your Main Street. What types of sectors are they in? People in this building? And also people from the merchants, service sector type of employees? Who are the employees that are on Main Street? Residents, employees? They are economic factors on your Main Street. How many historic buildings and landmarks do you have in this district? Is anybody actually tracking the amount of green spaces that need to be maintained and landscaped throughout the year on your Main Street? Who's responsible for them? Is it public works? Are there volunteer groups like garden clubs and so forth that handle flowers and landscaping and maintenance on your Main Street? Same for, how many installations of public art and monuments do you currently have? Where are they? Who's responsible for them? And what, and are there opportunities for further future installations? Also, parking, whether you manage municipal parking, if there is any, or private parking that can be available for public use. So many of the communities I go in don't do enough to tell the public where they could park when they get to their Main Streets and downtown. Really doesn't cost you anything to add that to any of your websites or webpages. You should market your parking and let people know what their options are when they get here. So those inventories are the tool, should be in your toolbox for any calls you get of businesses that are interested in locating in any of your spaces, or interested in any of the buildings, having that inventory available helps you on a number of factors. Number one, you're setting a plan of what you'd like to see recruited to your Main Street in the way of businesses, but also it's a good opportunity to converse with your building owners on the opportunities that you're going after, and let them know what the plan is for the types of businesses, commercial and establishments and restaurants that you want to see on your Main Street. So establishing this wish list of businesses that can be recruited to locate in vacant storefronts, that should be ongoing. And even if it's businesses that might, that you think are a good fit, and they might want to be looking for a second location, they're in the town next door, but they're looking for a second location here in Clinton, you can offer them that opportunity. You may want to look also at establishing what to do with the vacant windows and vacant storefronts while they're waiting to be leased and occupied, with some activity and engaging displays that create not only that visual, visible experience for the pedestrian and shopper walking up and down Main Street, but also is a beautification effort to show that there's, there's, there's activity, activity that's going on. I would say you may want to establish a public art program that, and we're seeing this in mostly every community I travel around the state of Connecticut, we're seeing a lot of concentration on the arts and art installation in downtown. Some of your neighboring towns have already started working out with murals and things of that nature, and this can, you can continue to grow that effort here in Clinton as well. One other action here that I've noted, and we're also seeing this quite often now, weekly, you'll see a situation where there's been some type of a disaster in a downtown, not necessarily in Connecticut, but throughout the U.S., what's the disaster, the business disaster plan for downtown businesses in the event of a flood, or a fire, or a cyber attack? How are we working with our businesses on Main Street to help them with that? As I mentioned earlier, you should start tracking all the impact data. It's good information, people want to know how many jobs were created on your Main Street, how many businesses have opened up, what type of businesses they are, property transactions, and public-private improvements. If the town puts improvements into sidewalks or the infrastructure, maybe the building owner decides to put, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars or a half a million dollars into fixing up the building for, for future use or for pending tenants, because the town has put that effort and investment in. So all of that and the numbers should be tracked. At the end of the year, you'll have a good story to tell with pictures and data. And then finally, well, a couple things, marketing strategy, I think, is something that you could get into sooner than later as well. Some of your neighboring towns have started getting into a marketing effort, wanting to be more than just the summertime beach traffic, wanting to encourage folks and promote and market their businesses all year round on Main Street, and so that's an effort that you may want to look into. And also, finally, the thought process in creating a more formal managed process for your Main Street, I think, is something that you should start the process to look into. So briefly, condensed version, those are my recommendations. This report has, like I said, we asked about 85 questions. It was long. It's a two and a half hour process. I do this on a regular basis, I follow up with a report, but if you go and scroll through the rest of the report, you will see the scoring for every question I asked. We broke it down into three categories. Stuff that we thought fundamentally you could get started with right away, sooner than later. Then intermediate, if you've been up and running and established for a number of years, these are things that, from an intermediate phase, you should get, you should address. And then finally, advanced, there's Main Street management programs across Connecticut that have been in existence for 10, 15, 20 years, that are handling advanced type of stuff as well. And we broke those, how you answered those questions into those three categories, and you'll see how you scored on them, but more importantly, every single question, if you scroll down, is connected to a hyperlink, which gets you right to the resource page at our website, where our office is, and addresses that item. So whether it be about parking, tenant landlord relations, landscaping, lighting, sidewalk conditions, traffic, you know, historic preservation, event coordination, how to establish a board, you name it, any category related to Main Street or downtown, we've established a hyperlink that gets you additional resources, templates, information, recordings of our, from our YouTube channel, presentations that we've given on those topics, so it's a full resources available for you anytime throughout the year, plus my services as Field Service Director to help you throughout the year, addressing your issues on Main Street. So, any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who did you ask all those questions?
I spoke with Michelle here, and we met with your...
Abby.
Abby.
Our town planner, and then Dale, our consultant, who's been working with the EDC.
That's what I wanted to know, did EDC get involved in this?
Yes.
I was there, I was there when they answered any of my questions.
But he's been part of the process.
And EDC engaged Connecticut Main Street five years ago or something. This is not our first journey over Doug. It's an outline of the things that we need to do. And so, yeah, Dale's pretty close, Dale is close with Connecticut Main Street, and he attends all the EDC meetings. So this will be at the next EDC meeting, talk about this, and then start to put action plans. This is a great framework and strategy, but someone's actually got to, the rubber's got to beat the road, right? Someone's got to do something.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item, we are going to hear from two departments this morning. One, Human Services, and Kathy's here.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So this is somewhat lengthy, I'm going to hit the high points. On the reports you guys have, there's some more details. So I kind of categorized things into the, things that we're kind of focusing on. We have just, we're in collaboration with the seniors program and the Clinton Public Library, and we put together a five-part series on promoting mental health for seniors. We are smack dab in the middle of that project. We started in February with seasonal affective disorder, and then linked between mental health, and then we're going into anxiety, grief, loss, loneliness, and then topping it off in July with dementia. This is specific to our 65 and older. We're doing it at the library, and they love it. They're asking for more, so there'll be more to come on that. We also had a collaboration with the Clinton Public Library and the Clinton Public Schools. We just finished a four-part series, One Book, One Community, which focused on the Anxious Generation book, which highlights the realities of kids, social media, smartphones, and also the loss of creative and, creative and independent play for our kids today. We had a workshop in January, February, March, and April with community members, parents, school administration. It was a wonderful event. We're going to look to kind of continue that conversation into the next school year. Within the department, we started a book club, we meet every other month. The book that we're reading, or they're reading now, is The Alchemist. We have started and launched kind of some awareness campaigns on our social media platforms. We all know every month, there's kind of this different theme, breast cancer awareness. February was Random Acts of Kindness Month, March was Women's History Month, April was Sexual Soul, Alcohol, and Stress Awareness Month, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So with every month, we're doing a couple different things. On all, on our social media platforms and websites, we're providing information, resources to the community as a whole, within the department, when we're working with our young people, we're utilizing those themes as content for groups. And we're also doing just small giveaways for last month's stress awareness. We gave out almost 100 stress balls to the community, they were able to take them at will. We had them here in Town Hall and over in the annex, and also about 25 different in-home workout exercise routines, different ways to de-stress. We're doing the same thing for, for May, we're giving away bracelets, pencils, suicide awareness resources. I put together a self-care packet with all kinds of different ways to take care of ourself. Mental health is not just about struggles, it's also just about taking care of ourself. We also had our annual job shadow program, working with Morgan School. We had 32 juniors participate, 18 of those participated in the construction day fair alone. Some of the career interests included nursing, radiology, physical therapy, finance, entrepreneurship, and hairdressing. This is something that the department's been working together with Morgan School for quite a few years. We started to increase and enhance our outreach efforts and prevention. My staff have started going to the high schools on a regular basis. They sit through all the lunch waves to interact, just interact with any and all of the students. The last event that we had a couple weeks ago, we had 121 students participate, and there was a topic was vaping. What do they really know? Just having discussions, it was a fun activity for the students, they got prizes, and it's just allowing them to, those who don't already know us, get to know us, and hopefully want to be involved a little bit more. I've been holding workshops for parents on how to access social security benefits for their children. The department is... all the lunch waves to interact, just interact with any and all of the students. The last event that we had a couple of weeks ago, we had a hundred and twenty-one students participate, and it was, the topic was vaping. What do they really know? Just having discussions. It was a fun activity for the students. They got prizes. And it's just allowing them to, those who don't already know us, get to know us, and hopefully want to be involved a little bit more. I've been holding workshops for parents on how to access social security benefits for their children. The department is now part of the school crisis response team, so we meet with the school, as school administration, police department monthly, talking about how we can keep the school safe, literally, figuratively, the building and everybody in it. We've also started discussions and are going to have our first meeting in May. I've been working with the social, the social supports division of the school all year to try to set up a collaborative team approach to early identify students that are, they identify as high risk for an array of things. So we're going to, in the fall, we're going to start having either monthly or quarterly meetings as a team to start talking about these students, and how can we as a department help them? How can we work with the schools to ensure that the student stays on the right track before they get too far, too far off course? I've developed a student internship program. This is going to offset some of the clinical responsibilities. We're going to, it's going to be manned by MSW students. I have one MSW student now. She's just about finished with her spring semester. For the fall, I have a Southern Connecticut State University student coming in, in discussions right now with UConn. I had a discussion yes, last week with Fairfield and Vera University, which is a university in Miami, is where my current student is enrolled. So that is going to offset. We still have a clinical opening in the department. We've had it for a while. Let's try to offset some of that and be able to provide the clinical services that we desperately, desperately need to be able to provide. Staff training, we've been able to start doing some trainings in-house. Our staff did some Narcan training. They did some elder care and service programs, training pediatric, oh, there's a typo there, pediatric post-traumatic stress disorder training, working with youth who have experienced trauma and violence, and then rediscovering and redesigning the juvenile review board. Our ARBA funds, we have two contracts in place with local fuel and energy providers, Wilcox and Quality Propane. Each of them has fifteen thousand dollars on the books. So essentially, any of our clients can call the social service department, express that they need help either in getting fuel or having repairs done. We will then reach out to one of those two providers, say so-and-so is going to be calling you. Please withdraw that money from our account. And then we also have about fifteen thousand dollars in grocery store gift cards to offset the food shortages that our town residents are experiencing. Big Y and Shop Right are the two providers of that. We also started a food program partnership with Kathy Weiss. This is allowing us to provide dietary-specific food to people. So things like people with diabetes, people who have gluten issues, low salt, anything like that. We have the meals. They're already prepared. All the clients need to do, what people need to do is come in and say they have this restriction, and we can provide them the food right then and there. From the social service department, we're seeing about seventy-five to a hundred cases a month. Approximately forty percent of those cases are seniors, so are sixty-five and older, and they're looking for services, the basic needs services, food, sometimes basic needs around hygiene supplies, basic needs around clothing supplies, financial assistance in different areas. This past fall, we provided support and submitted ninety-five operation fuel applications and another eighty-nine energy assistance applications. Those applications that were submitted do not count the number of clients that would reach out independently and ask for assistance for the, either the Wilcox or the propane fuel. Between the months of September and March, we provided approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars in assistance, financial assistance. That included the gift giving program, so that's why that number is enhanced slightly. We've helped with back rent, mortgages, back taxes, car repairs, parts, appliances, washing machine stoves, refrigerators, grocery store gift cards, house repairs. In some of the upcoming projects for the summer programming, we have two workshops in June, working with our middle schoolers around stress management, self-care, and mindfulness. July, we have six youth going to the Youth to Youth Conference in Ohio. It's a youth mentoring and leadership opportunity. We have our hiking program set up twice a week for three weeks. And then in August, we're going to be doing three sessions for our summer partners mentoring program. So our high schoolers are going to be mentoring our middle schoolers. We also have one middle schooler who we feel is responsible enough to step in and mentor an elementary school student. So we're trying to kind of set that stage. And we are going to be working more closely with the library on their after-school explorers program for the fall, and support groups for grief, loss, anxiety, and anxiety and depression are going to be starting sometime midsummer to the beginning of fall. This was something that our seniors asked, so I'm going to put that together and start facilitating that for them. That's that. July, so ten, I think. Yeah, I've got some amazing staff who are committed to whatever we kind of brainstorm and putting it on paper and making it work. So, and the library collaboration and the school collaboration, and, yeah, it helps. It helps. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. When you see it all, I mean, we get emails throughout the week, you know, things happening, but when you see it all on paper and you're like, wow, that's tremendous. Our community is really benefiting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Were there any questions? No? So, next department is the fire department.
Oh, here we go.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you a brief overview of our organization in town here. So as the first slide reads, we were established in nineteen eleven. It actually began in nineteen oh nine. Two years before that, with a small group of individuals in town, they then disbanded that group and became Clinton Volunteer Fire Company Number One in nineteen eleven. And then you'll see later on in the slide where we became the corporation. Doesn't want to move, Mike? Either one. There we go. We'll just go manually off the screen. All right. You have a copy of the packet, so I won't read off every single slide. You can read some of those highlights at your leisure. So we gave you a copy of our mission statement and our core values. The department overview, the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department is a highly respected organization within what we call the Valley Show Mutual Aid Association, and we're throughout the Middlesex County area. Renowned for our commitment to training and education and readiness, and we have nearly, in this slide, seventy active members. That has actually increased recently, and it's broken out through various aspects of the department that we'll talk about in a later slide, and all the different things we do through the community. And basically, the support from you and the community give us time to invest in top-tier equipment and ensure that we can respond to the community areas around us. So our strengths, right, that we're dealing with right now, we're well-regarded in the community and the surrounding area. We do have a good financial support from the community and the council as well. It allows us to continue to purchase and maintain existing equipment that we need to keep our members safe. We stay committed to training throughout the area, both on a national, state, and a local level. High call volume maintenance, well, we're going to talk about that in a later slide about some issues that we've encountered and how we're overcoming them. And the membership diversity, a lot of our members come from different walks of life, so we have different schedules and different times of availability, which is good for us because we're able to enhance our services throughout the twenty-four hour period. So challenges that we're facing, you see number one on our list, recruitment and retention, and you just saw it's become a highlight at the state level and hitting the media now about the decline. Councilman Chauv sits on that board, so he can really dive down into that. But that's really a discussion and a workshop that we would like to have with you at a later time because that's a whole nother event in its own. And we'll talk about the challenges of the minimal training requirements and hours required. You'll see that breakdown in one of our other slides. Another limitation we deal with now is where we can go for training. We don't have a dedicated training facility here in our community, so we utilize partner agency equipment, especially with public works. We've used the police station community room for some of our training events. Right now, we have props set up at the existing stations and, including a forty-foot metal container that's built out behind the firehouse, and our live fire training is conducted either at one of the regional facilities or one of our mutual aid partners. Equipment and maintenance, ongoing challenges, you've heard us speak on this before, especially with the apparatus replacement plan, and just trying to follow those OSHA and NFPA safety compliance standards to keep everybody safe. And again, the increasing responsibility based on the changes in the community and our surrounding areas. So the structure of our organization, it's like a paramilitary organization, similar to the police department, and the public works follows a similar model. We have distinct layers. We have a line officer group. We have an administrative officer group, and we also have corporate officers that manage that side of the agency, and they're all under the leadership, starting at the top level, the chief officer. So in your packet, you can see the breakdown of our organizational chart and who reports to who, based on whether it's an administrative task in the firehouse, a corporate issue, or us involving how we operate on the fire ground during an emergency. So the line officers role, they have direct authority over the members and issues in the community when you're operating during an emergency incident. They lead the firefighting efforts, so command and control, supervision. They also manage the training of the members that are going forward onto the fire ground and implement any fire ground tactics that may be needed based on what we're faced with and compliance with local safety protocol. Our administrative officers oversee the administrative functions, human resources, tracking of training, record-keeping, basics, and they coordinate some of the scheduling moving forward, depending on what we have for events going on in the community, and they can assist with finances for equipment procurement and maintenance. And then on the corporate side of the house, there's four corporate officers that just structured to manage our internal side, basically making sure that we're, have our policies and procedures are up to date, any planning for the future, financial oversight on the department side, and ensuring compliance with obviously anything legal that comes forward. So some governing documents that we have to follow. We, we talked about nineteen eleven, it was Clinton Volunteer Fire Company Number One. We became Clinton Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated in nineteen ninety-one, so we're in a corporation with the state of Connecticut. We are following consensus standards set forth by NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, and we follow OSHA, which is our, basically our law that we have to follow for training, safety, operations, PPE, et cetera. Internally, we're managed by about a fourteen-page document that are bylaws on how we run on the corporate side, and then the rest of our governing documents are followed through on our policy procedure and best practices manual, getting down to how you actually operate, depending on what type of incident we go to. ISO, we'll touch on in a later slide, and our mutual aid agreements are what we have written for when we have a large skill incident that we have to call in surrounding towns for help and vice versa when we go to other places. The membership right now, so we updated this, everybody cumulative right now, we're at about eighty-five active members. We broke it down by each of the different categories. So, and a lot of them are moving targets every year, depending on people going to school, people playing sports, changes in your lives. But we like to break out the different types of firefighters, and the number that doesn't count toward that is members that are cross-trained for both fire and EMS. It's pretty much fifty percent of the organization or more. So, under recruitment, retention, and incentive programs that are in place now, we've had the tax exemption program for a very long time. It was last updated in twenty twelve. Right now, that stands, if the member meets their minimum requirements, they can receive a thousand, up to a thousand dollars off of either personal property or their motor vehicle tax. That has changed at the state and national level, so that's something we're going to be coming to you with a workshop to discuss. The LOSAP program was instituted in twenty sixteen, and there's two parts, Plan A or Plan B. Plan A is a defined benefit. Once you're vested after twenty years of active service, there's a per month at age sixty-five, and there's a small group collecting on that, and then a group that could potentially. And then Plan B, which is going, started in twenty sixteen, and is for any new member that comes in off the street now, it's a thousand dollars a year into a four fifty-seven E account. But again, we'll touch on a lot of those in a separate workshop, but we just wanted to give you an overview of what is existing now based on what we're seeing in the media and how we're handling it locally as a department and a community. So some challenges for recruitment. The biggest thing is time. I came into the service here in nineteen ninety-five. This is probably tripled in the amount of hours that are required to meet that minimum to hit the street. So, and this, this only encompasses the hours for somebody coming in brand new. This doesn't even cover your continuing education, or if you want to be somebody that's in the officer level. So firefighter one, two hundred and seventy-six hours right off the bat. We were able to shrink this a little bit. Clinton is right now hosting a combination program. We're doing Fire One, Fire Two, and Hazmat, all at the same time. So it kind of, it's a blended program. It's working out really well. It's through Middlesex County Fire School, and we're the first ones in this state to kind of pilot this part of the program. On the EMS side, EMR is your entry level. You're looking at sixty-plus hours now, and then EMT could be upwards of a hundred and fifty. And then you'd start touching on the different layers that were required to follow by OSHA standards. We have to hit, as interior firefighters, we have to touch on ten topics once a quarter, and certain things on an annual basis, certain things on a biannual basis, on top of live fire training, which we're utilizing partner agencies' facilities for, and in-house CPR and bloodborne training, and hazardous materials training. Overview, apparatus listings at fire headquarters located diagonally across the street here at thirty-five East Main Street. The Glenwood Station, one forty-nine Glenwood Road, right at the entrance to Peters Complex, just down from Joel School, and a quasi station at the marina. You see a picture here. That is the new vessel that you approved. We should be seeing delivery in the coming weeks. So right now, we have three operating vessels. Two are at the marina. One is kept at the firehouse, and the new one will be sitting at the dock in a short order, and then there'll be a transition period for training. It's important. We're a coastal community, and the coastlines of Clinton, Madison, and Westbrook are really where we go on a regular basis, and we can travel as far out as to the North Shore, Long Island. And our, routinely, what ends up happening is, you think about the firehouse has multiple pieces of apparatus that you can respond with. Well, each town only has one boat. So when you get an incident, you send one from every town. That's how you kind of get everything together. So if somebody has a problem, you're not out there by yourselves. So it's not uncommon to stretch anywhere from Guilford to Ranford all the way out to Old Lyman, and sometimes up as far as Chester on the Connecticut River. So response statistics, this is for last year, twenty twenty-four, two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven calls for service. It's a big number. The year before that was just as big of a number, and we kind of broke it down for you. And the thing that we just looked at yesterday is compared to last year, as of this April, we're already seeing a twelve percent increase in calls, and as much as twenty-one percent increase on fireside calls. So we break them down really into three categories. If you look at your chart on the blue, you can see it's EMS, and that encompasses about seventy-two percent of what we do, and that number stayed pretty consistent for at least the last five years. But what we've seen this year is the fire and the rescue trend has grown in just the first quarter of our year. And something we started tracking two years ago is what we call overlapping incidents, and I can't read that number that far. So, where are we? So, in the calendar year twenty twenty-four, four hundred and two times, there was more than one call going on in this community at the same time. I think our high number was six at the same time, and that encompassed nine hundred and fifteen of our two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. And that encompassed nine hundred and fifteen of our two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven calls. There was something else going on at the same time. So it gets a little interesting at times. We're fortunate that we do work on the EMS side and the motor vehicle accident side with the police department. So they're on the road twenty-four seven. We're constantly working with them, and we lean on Public Works, especially during the day, to fill in some of those roles. So I spoke about being a member of Town of Valley Shore Mutual Aid Association. That goes back probably forty-plus years now, Todd. So, it was initially a twelfth-town collaboration. Now we're at thirteen. Derm joined us again. So it's a good partnership. It works really well. We, based on our availability and reputation in the area, our service area has really expanded. So if you look at our map, the yellow is areas we go on a regular basis, almost on initial calls of anything of significance. And the green is areas where we've started to branch out to. We filled out that last survey for the state, and we had to figure out what our total geographical area is. Mutual aid on a regular basis, we're covering like three hundred and forty square miles now. So it's getting to be large, and they've extended it out. We didn't even have enough room on the slide to give you the areas where we went to South Berry with the regional deployment, or we went out to Rhode Island for their large brush fires, or where they had the tornadoes in Brookfield we deployed there. We assisted deep with towing for their foam trailer to an incident recently in Bridgeport. And we went to New London when that oil truck crashed and burned on the bridge to deploy containment boom for them. And then years ago, we deployed as a group, a hazmat group with an engine, out to train derailment with hazardous materials in Wyndham. And two recent ones, we were called to Montville with the tanker for a scrapyard fire. And the reason they do that is so you don't strip this entire area right away. They take assets from around different regions and move them into that area to kind of create that buffer. The other most recent one, if anybody's familiar with, when Middletown had the large water main break, they had no fire protection in the city. So we sent the tanker as one of the assets to provide fire protection in the event that they had an incident. Thankfully, they didn't. So where does that all go? We collected all these hours to break down what kind of percentages the membership does for the community here. So obviously, in red, you see fifty-five percent of our total hours are spent managing incidents. And not far behind that is thirty-two percent of those hours are at training and then work details to kind of manage everything we have. And then a little bit of time that we have left over, we take care of some internal fundraising. So how our budgets are kind of broken down, not getting into specific numbers. We operate really under four different budget lines. So town operating and then town capital. And that also carries in any bond funding or reserve or carryovers from other projects. We have an internal corporate fireside budget and an internal EMS budget that manages just the EMS side and all its supplies. So current projects that we have going on, obviously, those of you that are around for a while know we've been doing PPE replacement on an annual basis, and we thank you for that. Keeps everybody safe. Thermal imaging camera training, we actually just completed. Twenty-six of our thirty-five interior firefighters went through that training last weekend on the new cameras that you provided the funding for. The townwide defibrillator program, the rollout has already begun. Police, fire, and EMS are already in service. The Board of Ed and Public Works will be coming online next. We've been working with Michelle for a training and rollout plan for the town buildings. And then we'll start moving into areas like the beach, the sports complexes, the marina, and then getting out into some of the areas of the community where there's a little bit more exposure as far as large gatherings. The brush truck replacement, you see two pictures of now. The vehicle as it was delivered, this was funding you provided us through ARPA, and it's actually doing what its intent was. The body that's going to be going on this truck right here is being built next door in Westbrook, Connecticut by a local vendor. Supply hose for ARPA is in process. The boat, you will see in short order, and then we're going to talk about water supply. So I think Dennis was probably on board when we started the water supply project. And that was, that was back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. They provided us funding for a study. And we got the study done. We did an ISO review and started hitting target hazards. So we got little bits of money throughout the capital budget and started getting dry hydrants installed. We did some work out on Cedar Island. We got bond funding in twenty twenty that kind of stalled because of COVID and it kind of drove the prices up. So the project, some of that was completed, and we're moving forward with that now. And now we're working on bids for two sites that we'll be giving to Michelle to approve, to go out to bid shortly. And we're looking at another site on Silver Birch Lane for a dry hydrant. So when I talk about a dry hydrant, it's basically a pipe with a stanchion that's supported, and it just gives you access to water in a pond, lake, or stream year-round. You don't have to use this, you can go direct. But if there's ice, that's going to kind of defeat the purpose, and we're in New England. All these were completed with funding that you provided us through the capital project. The first of, the first three sites were completed with these thirty-thousand-gallon underground tanks for the purposes solely for fire protection, put in at the Little Red Schoolhouse up at Cow Hill. And Airline, one down the street, just off the Hessler Pond parking lot. And at the end of Creampot Road at the rear entrance to Evergreen Mole Home Park, there's a tank that was installed there, a land trust property. The Mole Hole Park, at the time of the study, was identified as one of our largest target hazards based on the number of fire incidents that occurred there and the lack of water supply in that area. So we worked with the land trust. It's a lot easier for us to do these initial installations on Town and Land Trust property because we're not dealing with lawyers and mortgages of peoples to be able to use their private property. Some completed projects now. So in twenty twenty, we received an Assistance to Firefighters Act grant for personal escape bailout systems in the event that a firefighter gets cut off and they don't have a ladder that they can escape. They don't have to just jump out the window and fall to the ground. So we worked with Public Works, and in the left-hand picture, you see a prop that was built inside at the north-end firehouse by Todd's staff that we can use for year-round training now. That was also shared funding through capital. So the grant didn't cover the whole amount. The town subsidized the other side, so we thank you for that, and everybody is moving along. We're one of five departments in the area that have these systems. Connecticut did not enact a law, and New York State has. So we'll see where the future brings us. Twenty twenty-two, we received another Assistance to Firefighters grant for a PPE washer and drying system and also the protective hoods that we wear that has, the newer style have a cancer prevention barrier. Not foolproof, but those members that you can talk to that have worn the old versus the new, we've noticed a significant difference just in the smell when you take a shower. Thermal imaging camera replacement is completed. Those, we hit the ground running with those. And in the center picture, you see the tanker that you funded through the apparatus. The first vehicle they'd be funded through, that apparatus reserve fund is in service just over a year now. So projects that we have coming up in the future. The one that's going to come up on us pretty quick is what's called the ISO Rating Survey. It's an independent agency that rates emergency services in every community nationwide, and that sets your fire protection rate for your insurance company. We field those phone calls all the time to what our fire, what our rating system's going to be. Our last one was done in twenty fifteen. We were in a class-five classification. We're hoping to get down to a four. Three is going to be a long shot. So we're hoping to drop that down, bring everybody's cost down. And those tanks and those dry hydrants play a role into that, as does apparatus. They also look at your hydrant system. Unfortunately, we don't have control over that, but we work really well with the water company to kind of get those systems out there. We'll work with Chief DeMayo. They look at the communications. And we'll work with the Fire Marshal's Office on community risk reduction and pre-plans and building inspections, that kind of thing. It all comes into play for that. If the budget passes going forward in a week or so, we have a hose replacement project, the medical rescue replacement, and PPE are all included in that. So we hope the community continues to support the town there. Future projects, we have some rescue tool replacements coming up. Some of that stuff is about as old as I am. So, but it still works. We're getting there. Unfortunately, with new vehicle technology, we're getting to the point where we have to transition to newer equipment. And lastly, the big elephant in the room, at some point, we got to continue the discussion for the replacement of fire headquarters across the street. That's all we have.
Most of the, you said seventy percent of them are EMS responses? And you had a list of eighty-five volunteers, and you had EMRs and EMTs. You had adequate staffing or a hundred EMT?
Staffing right now, it's a game. Now, we have, we have a good group now. We're covering our calls. We didn't break down. We look at monthly the amount of calls that we go mutual aid to cover somebody else and when somebody covers us, and the reason why. Was it because we were already out on another call and couldn't fill a second or a third crew? Or if we could only fill one half? So we run a schedule on a twenty-four-hour period that members sign up for for coverage.
How about the mix between EMTs and EMRs?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. The EMR number has gotten smaller over time because the state is kind of going away from that, and they're trying to push everybody to the EMT as the minimum standard. We have, we, EMR is basically how it works out is if you want to be an EMR and you can drive, I have to have an EMT in the back. If you, as the driver, are only CPR certified, now I have to get two people to ride in the back of the A buildings. So that's kind of where EMR bridges that gap with that smaller, lower level of training. It's so you only need two people to crew out the A buildings versus three. We see a lot of that in New York State where they only have CPR, AED training for the driver, and they only have to have two crew members to cover the patient in the back.
How about the police chiefs? Do they, police, the first responders quite often, right?
Yeah, we're, we are the designated first responder for Clinton. So we respond to all medical calls, whether called it to nine-one-one. But we're basically like medics is the best part of it, we can say. So if we stop the bleed and we need fire, we rely on them to come and do the ambulance night support, the transport, and all the other things. So we basically try to get their stabilized patient for their arrival. But we do respond to all, and it's a huge chunk of our response time.
What percentage of the twenty-three-hundred calls are actually outside of Clinton?
Do you? I don't think we broke down the percentage, just the number. So to give you an idea, we responded to roughly twenty-four fires in the last calendar year in our area. So, and, and the numbers will be pretty much the same for the other towns because we're calling in three or four towns when we have one here. Just to make sure we have a number, the right number of people to meet that minimum standard, which is a challenge every day.
Any other questions?
I have two. First one, are we going to continue those big water tanks in the ground?
Yes, so we have a balance left in the, in that bond amount. We worked with Bob and Michelle. We just met with the engineer. Todd's crew dug some test holes at two sites. So those will be hopefully going out to bid in the next week or two, hopefully.
My second question is, with that probable problem over in Westbrook, will that impact us at all with all that ambulance?
We are waiting to see what direction that goes. They have not reached out to us directly for any oversight or coverage at this point. So we are, we, we do have a mutual aid agree with them, agreement with them that exists already. So where that's going to go, I think that would come down to a discussion that the first selectmen would be reaching out to Michelle and then bring us into play there to see where it goes. But it's a big unknown right now. We know, we pretty much know as much as you do based on what's been in the media and the newspaper.
I'm just wondering, like, the three closest towns, Sabre on the other side, probably Deep River North, and then have you guys probably gotten together and tried to get some kind of a plan? Because you know we're all going to have to respond in there.
It's a possibility. It's one of, that's one of those situations where we don't want to kind of stick our nose into something right off the bat. I know we're, we're, we have our staffing model. Essex has their staffing model, Old Sabre has theirs. So it's, it's a, it's a shared responsibility. Scary but loaded question there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Professor.
Thank you.
Item number seven and eight both involve grants for human services. Is Kathy going to speak to them? Is that necessary?
No, I mean, unless you have questions about them.
Okay. All right. Everyone looked at their agenda.
And there's descriptions.
Okay. All right, so one was for forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that is a Youth Service Bureau enhancement grant. And so they're looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of this Youth Service Bureau enhancement grant in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, so the town council hereby authorizes the acceptance of the Youth Service Bureau enhancement grant in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. The next is a grant for four thousand one hundred and fifty-two, and that is a local prevention council grant. Any questions for Kathy on that?
Motion to approve.
All right, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. And the town council hereby authorizes the acceptance of the local prevention council grant in the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents. The next is for a small harbor improvement project.
So we received the grant that the council approved to be submitted. So we need approval for me to accept the grant for a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. This will be for improvements to Esposito Beach overall. The overwater platform, including seating, educational signage down at the marina and stabilizing of the dilapidated timber, stone, curbing the adjacent to the boat launch, and enhancing enhancement shoreline, intertidal area to improve habitat and water quality and minimize erosion adjacent to the boat launch. So you saw that we received that, so you just need to authorize me to accept it.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay. So the town council hereby authorizes the acceptance of the Small Harbor Improvements Project in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and directs the town manager to sign the agreement with the Connecticut Port Authority. All right. So item number ten, police department and Public Works line item transfer requests. And we will start with the police department. And you can see a request to decrease fuel and increase marine support for two thousand sixty-five dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. And then, secondly, Public Works. And that is in the amount of ten thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents in order to purchase a new body for truck number fifteen.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Economic Development Monthly Update, this is going to be a new monthly update. And who will be updating us?
I will be updating. So I know that economic development is an initiative, obviously, that we all want to work towards, and it's very important to the council and the community. So I thought with all the efforts we're putting into with a consultant, the Main Street program, and working with businesses that provide in council and update every month would be helpful for them to hear what's the latest happening. So we, obviously, we did the Connecticut Main Street program. So we're in the process of creating a subcommittee to start reviewing the assessment and outlining what we can work on first. The committee is going to consist of myself, members of the EDC, our consultant Dale, a couple of business owners from the Main Street itself, and a representative from the Chamber of Commerce. So we the Chamber of Commerce, so we can have a nice representation. One of the things that was acknowledged in the assessment was working on social media and communication. So, we have started to work with Mosaic Social Media Marketing Firm. So, if you follow our town page, they've started doing some posts about Clinton as a community, how great all the draws here for living here, where it's going to grow and focus on business, industries that are out there that would be a good fit for Clinton, transportation. A post went up today about the railroad and our station, so that will continue to grow. So, that's a positive there. We've also kicked off an Instagram page, which was something that we didn't have before, but really gears towards a younger population. So, that was a recommendation. So, we've launched that, I believe, on Friday or Monday. So, we are working to drive followers to that page as well. I've also been visiting businesses as they've been opening. Lobster Landing opened, J&amp;M Dockside at the Town Marina opened. Very exciting. There are lines around the building, actually, especially at Lobster Landing. Property updates, there's a lot happening. Obviously, blight is a big thing right now with the grass is growing, but I'm working very close to make sure that we stay on top of that. A couple of updates on some properties that have gotten attention. High Street, Twenty-Two High and the other properties there are all slated for demolition. There's been posting on that pay, in front of the buildings for ninety days, and those buildings will be coming down. Fourteen West Main Street, I've been working with the property, the new property owner there. They have pulled permits, and they will be re-siding and putting in new windows within a hundred and eighty days that permit is good for. They met with Abby on Thursday and had a great conversation and are working and appreciative of the town for our patience, and will be making those changes. So, that's all great stuff. And that is all I have right now.
So, that was economic development report?
Correct.
And now it's town manager report?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Or just a comment? So, you know, we always, whenever we're talking about economic development, we talk about parking downtown. And I've been like obsessed with looking at other towns, and really, we do have plenty of parking. It's just behind, you know, those buildings. So, two things on that. When we're talking about economic development, can we think about more signage?
Yeah.
To direct people to park there? And two bathrooms? So, you know, someone made a comment that there's nowhere to go to the bathroom, so if they park there and we actually get people to walk around where they can go to the bathroom, would we think about a short-term solution, putting some porta-potties in?
That would be something, you know, a lot of towns for parks and, you know, during the busy season, they bring in the porta-potties. That's something I can talk to Todd about. But as far as parking, that has been something that's been acknowledged. Abby and I have been meeting on a more regular basis about economic development and this assessment, and parking is, is, we have ample parking. It's just the poor signage. So, we're working on that. Yes, absolutely.
Anything else on economic development?
So, town manager report. I am hopefully in the final stages of DPW union negotiations, so I'll be coming to you in the next probably month or so with a contract. Clerical Union, I'm starting those negotiations the end of this month. We have a retirement, Donna, who is the clerk in our Public Works Department. She is retiring at the end of June, so that position is being posted internally. During the budget process, we've all, we, we talked about the need for providing some kind of snacks and beverages down at the beach. So, we engaged with a vending company. We are going to have three vending machines there, ice cream, snacks, and cold beverages. No cost to the town. They will come, they will maintain them, they will be in charge of making sure they're restocked. The only thing on our side, which we knew was going to be putting in a camera, so Mike is in the process of getting that finalized. So, they will be in place, ready for kickoff on Memorial Day weekend. And then, there are also, for anyone who would like to attend, there is a ceremony honoring World War II veterans taking place on Monday, May nineteenth, at eleven o'clock at the State Armory in Hartford. It is intended to recognize all living veterans from that era, so anyone in town or members of the public are welcome to join this recognition. So, I wanted to share that. We just got notified, I think, yesterday, so. And that is all I have.
Questions? No? Okay. Chairman Report. Our America Two-Fifty Committee, which we put together to celebrate from now until July Fourth of next year, the signing of the Declaration of Independence, is hosting, in part, a program tonight at the library, and that is hosted by, I'm sorry, presented by Dave LaVassar, Seeds of Dissent about young men who volunteered for American Revolution from what was then Killingworth. That's tonight at six PM. I, of course, like everyone else, am happy to hear the news about fourteen West Main Street. I was very happy to see that twenty-seven West Main Street that had been for sale for quite some time is now occupied, and the owners are already working on that. And obviously, the old CVS, they're getting to work on that property. There, Michelle had talked some time ago about a letter going out in the tax bill, the next tax bill, to explain to the taxpayers how some of their tax dollars are being used. And I imagine, are you still planning on doing that?
So, that was something that I had talked about or brought the idea of early on. It's something that's an opportunity to share, not just how our tax dollars are being utilized, but other happenings in Clinton that, you know, everyone gets a tax bill, so it's a great opportunity to reach our property owners, and the mailings are going out anyway, so to add an additional letter is an, is an easy reach for us. So, the council would just need to decide if they would like that to go out. I'd be happy to draft it, and we could send it around the way we did the statement we put out about inclusion, where you all can look at it and email me back directly your feedback, so we don't have a quorum, if that's something you feel that you would like, or if we feel that we don't need to do that. So, that's something you all can discuss.
Okay. Do we discuss that informally or formally at the next meeting?
No, no, I would do it sooner than later because once the budget passes, hopefully, if the budget passes, I would need to get that letter written so that it could be ready for the tax bills to go out.
Okay. Opinions?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yes?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right, that sounds great. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, so I'll start working on a draft of that.
Let's see. Also, after a conversation with Michelle yesterday, we decided that it would be a good idea to have another workshop regarding the library, but more breakdown of the cost per section of that plan. It's something that Mike brought up. And I understand Mary Beth has that listing, but to make that information public would probably be a better idea. And then, also, mechanicals, that other big conversation. And perhaps Todd would be involved with that.
Right, so we had the mechanical assessment, so we mailed, emailed out to everyone the packets that I received from Mary Beth with the budgets and the cost for mechanicals. And I do think that the workshop, you know, was a good starting point, but I do think that there was a lot that came out of it more than answers, so I think that's an important conversation to continue and learn more about. So, I think another workshop, definitely at least one more, would be helpful.
And so, maybe schedule that sometime in June?
I think June probably would be a good time, but again, it's up, the council needs to decide that.
Okay.
Feel you need that, or?
I think that it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's always a good idea to be perfectly clear. Okay. All right.
So, Mary will work with coordinating everyone's schedule to do that.
All right. Council Discussion? None?
Speaking of workshops, I think we should probably have a policy about how we do business in workshops, just who talks, who's invited, who, how we can have a consistent set of rules that are applied evenly throughout our workshops, because I don't think we have those.
So, I think, so Brian mentioned to me, we've had a couple workshops lately, and each workshop has gone under a different format. Some workshops were intended to be just a council discussion, and then other workshops engaged with members of prospective boards and commissions. My suggestion would be to the council, I'd be happy to draft a policy for you, but I, my, my suggestion of what the policy would reflect is that, based on the council's desire for a workshop, and based on the content of that workshop, each workshop should have its own set of, a set format. So, for example, if you all wanted to have a roundtable discussion amongst yourselves, so you can legally have a meeting with the quorum to discuss a topic and not have any interaction from the public or a commission, then that workshop should be set. We're going to have this workshop, and this is going to be the format. If it's going to be a workshop similar to the library discussion, where we want interaction from a certain group of people, whether it be the library board, the director of the library, we outline it. We're going to have a workshop on the library project on this date, and we would like these people here, and this is how it's going to be. I think the format really depends on the content of the work, on the subject matter.
And I, I think it depend, if we, as a council, feel like we have like ninety-eight percent of the information, and we just need to talk it out, then we just need it amongst ourselves. There's times where we don't know, you know, we're being asked to make decisions on stuff we don't have all the information for. So, on those workshops, I feel like we need interaction from whatever party we're bringing in to educate us.
Right. I think that the, some of the feedback was that some people were not allotted, allotted the same amount of, of opportunities to speak as other workshops when they've taken place. So, I think that the council just needs to decide, you know, we, we want to have another library workshop. So, we decide this, we're going to have a library workshop. Who does the council fee, feel need to be there, or is the council just want to say, this workshop is going to be, the public's welcome to come and listen, however, there isn't going to be any interaction with them. It's going to be just a conversation for the seven at the table.
Yeah, and all, all of that should just be known upfront.
Right, so if, if we're, okay, so if we're all good with that, then I will draft that, again, like we've made similar policies. I will send that out, everyone put their eyes on it, and send me back some feedback directly, and then at the next council meeting, I can present that, and we can formally just make a, act, take an action that it's going to be the policy. Are you all good with that?
Any other council discussion?
Policies, policy, policies. We could get wrapped up in a lot of policies. Go ahead.
But ones are made.
I mean...
Yeah.
I don't understand what, what's, what are our problem right now? You just say that before a meeting, or you stipulate that as we do a workshop, this workshop will be?
Yeah, but that hasn't been done.
It was done in the past, it's changed recently. When we used to have workshops as a council, it would be, we're having a workshop as a council, and our discussion was amongst the table. And then the public, if they tried to talk, we would say, it's a workshop amongst the council. So, I mean, those are different types of meetings. A workshop is, is basically saying, if the council wants to have a workshop, it's this table having a discussion about a project or something going on in town. That was always the case. So, now if it's changing because you want input from the public, well, then that's not a workshop. So, that's a completely different meeting. And it's how you post the meeting. If you're posting the meeting as a workshop, then that's what it is. I mean, if you have a public interaction, that's a public hearing. That's what that is. A workshop for the council is a workshop. If you want a public hearing, then you, then you disclose that as a public hearing, and you ask for input from the public, and you have interaction with the public.
Yeah. I think in this case, it was also the WPPCC where we wanted to talk amongst ourselves.
That wasn't disclosed as a WPPCC meeting. That was supposed to be disclosed some, completely, something entirely different.
So, we'll be careful to disclose what it is.
Well, that wasn't a meeting for the WPPCC. That was supposed to be a meeting that we were going to discuss something different. It turned into a WPPCC meeting because you wanted input from the WPPCC, but that's not what we disclosed.
So, what we need to do is clarify exactly what we want on the agenda, I suppose, for the workshop? Yeah? Yeah?
Workshop or a public hearing?
On the agenda, yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't care if people, if people would like, people should have the input.
But to be clear, though, for a workshop, though, the council can request certain individuals or groups to be there to get more information for things that they need, such as the library.
But it would still be a different?
Like when they did that. It's still a workshop, though, but, well, you...
It is a workshop, right?
If it's a public hearing, then you're inviting anyone to speak. If it's a workshop, and you're trying to learn more about a certain project...
Then you disclose it as a workshop, that you would be inviting them into that conversation.
That's what I'm asking. Right, so, but we would, we would outline that, that this group would be included in this discussion.
Like we've done in the past, a workshop with that organization or that group.
Right, like, like the budget workshops. The department heads are there to participate in. Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the WPPCC thing just, that wasn't that...
And that, I mean, I...
My understanding was that wasn't the meeting.
Right, and I, and I take some of that responsibility because I did say to them, they are welcome to attend, and if there is a question for them, they could be asked. I do not encourage it to be an open forum, but that unfortunately went.
I didn't see anything wrong with either workshop. I mean...
Okay.
Except the fact that, as Chris said, a workshop generally just means this table talking. Now...
Except we want to learn to...
Yeah, I mean, I understand, the library never got a chance to present all their stuff, but probably the place for that to what happened was at a regular meeting. Usually, that's what happens on other projects in the past. Maybe we should have said to the library, come to a regular meeting and make a presentation with the PowerPoint, and that's open to the public and everybody can discuss. But, you know, you make mistakes. I mean, hey, it's, it's, you know, this...
That's what makes the world go round.
We make mistakes, we correct them. But I mean, to start policies about this, this, and this, we could have a book of, we ought to have a policy book on policies. So, I just mean that I think we can control it.
Maybe we need to clarify in our minutes today what the definition has been established here for each of these.
I mean, a workshop, yes, is just this table.
Okay.
I mean, if there's a...
From now on, you know, if something happened, maybe that was our mistake, we should have just said to the library nicely.
I think we just thought the library was going to be such a, a big presentation that to have it as part of a regular meeting, it was just going to be that. Mary and I did have that conversation. We kind, we just, we just knew that it would be too big for a regular meeting.
Well...
But...
But you can still do a presentation from whatever they wanted to do, and then we can ask those questions at that time. And then if it was a workshop, I mean, it could be disclosed as a presentation from the library on behalf of what they're looking to do, or whatever other group. And then, a workshop would be for us, as council members, to sit there and discuss that, because we, during an open meeting and dialogue, we can have those questions and answer period.
So, then on that subject, because we just discussed the need for an additional, for more information about the, the library itself, what does the council want? Do they want to have them added to the next council meeting as a presentation from the library with these specific areas on the finances, the mechanicals, cost?
Yes.
Is that what you'd like? So, we don't need an additional?
Yeah, just like the fire department and everybody else, you know, they gave a presentation, and...
Okay.
It's a little long sometimes, but I'm sure they'll, they know how to do it. I mean, library knows how to shorten it up. I'm not talking about you individually. I'm not talking about you individually, but I'm just saying. You know, we had the Main Street, we had a lot today, all in one day, but, I mean, if the library comes, they, they know how to present.
Okay.
And I think they should present at a regular council meeting, and then back and forth.
Okay.
So, you have a, a public presentation at a regular council meeting?
Right.
Or you have a workshop where it's just us?
Exactly.
And then, in, in that workshop, could you have a subgroup that would be, you can invite an expert witness if you needed one? If you say, well, we think we know everything, but maybe we don't.
That's true. I'm going to ask for more of this.
As we're going through it, we can ask them a question.
If you need to.
I think that, I think that's not what they just, I think that's not point in the workshop. I think that's, I think what you should have is the presentation as part of a council meeting, and then if you need a separate workshop to discuss what you were provided at that presentation, to make a decision.